Special study session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Pats?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bowders?
Here.
And Mayor Donahue?
Here.
Approval of final agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Bowders, seconded by Councilmember Medina.
Oh, study session, never mind, thank you.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowders?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye. Public comment for agenda items, items not on the agenda. Any ex parte communications about this?
Yep.
Item? Okay, this is the study session. Green infrastructure requirements of the Regional Water Quality Control Board's Municipal Regional Stormwater National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit.
I think that's on. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and thanks for hearing this. And to the audience, I apologize that I'm gonna, I'm ahead of the agenda. I'll try and be as fast as I can. Before I get started, I just wanted to take this moment to thank Maurice Kaufman. This is his last council meeting, and I just, having worked for him just for a couple of years, I just wanted to note for the record that he has been great to work for. He demonstrates and encourages creative thinking. He has luminous knowledge about both the physical infrastructure and the human infrastructure of Emeryville. He's always put in the good of the city first and very supportive, always trying to get to the best outcome and helping us do that. So I just want to thank you for that. We're here tonight to talk about green infra, well, a couple of key requirements of the newer municipal regional national pollutant discharge elimination system permit, or we call it MRP 2. The green infrastructure item is new this year, this permit term, and one of the things it says is that we have to have an educational session about it with you. So that's one of the reasons we're here. I'm gonna do part of the presentation, and then I'm gonna hand it off to Matt Anderson, who is our intern. He comes to us from having been a fellow with Civic Spark last year in the city of Piedmont. So he's been very, very helpful in this whole, in a lot of things. So, all right, so the municipal regional stormwater permit, we call it MRP 2 because it's a second one. It's how we are allowed to use our stormwater system is by adhering to these permit elements. It was reissued, the second one was issued in November 2015, and it was effective last year. All 76 permatees, we are jointly permitted together. So we get a lot of economies of scale that way, planning and documentation. There are new requirements or significantly expanded requirements in MRP 2. I'm here to talk about green infrastructure, but I wanted to mention that the trash load requirements are ramping up fast. So prior to 2016, we had to achieve 40% trash reduction through a complicated formula that is pretty time-consuming, both to document and to calculate. And then as of last year, last July 1st, we had to have been at 60%. This July 1st, we have to be at 70%, and we're, and then 80% by 2019, and then projected, it's not in this permit term, but it's understood that we're supposed to be getting to 100% trash reduction by 2022.
Wow.
That's a pretty high bar. We are at about 70% through their, through the formulas that they've given us, but it takes a lot of work to document. One thing I've just, the reason I'm saying it is, we're gonna, to get to 80 and then 100%, we're gonna have to put in infrastructure. In addition to, we currently control trash four ways: through the swap crews that pick up trash virtually every day, year-round, through street sweeping, through inlet devices that capture trash in the inlet before it gets into the storm drain system, and through source control, like the bag ban and the eco-foodware ordinance. Just for reference, this is an inlet trash capture device. We have about 55 of those in place right now. We're requiring them in new developments now, and we are also starting to require them in private commercial parking lots when they come to us for a permit, but we're going to have to, we're gonna have to require them in commercial parking lots regardless. Yes?
How often do those get maintained?
Twice a year. They get inspected up to four times a year. Sort of depends on the workload and their eyeballing of how they're working. And then Jamal and his crew service them twice a year.
And do we do any inventory on what they're finding? So, you know, with the bag ban, with the presumption, the presumption is that you're gonna see less of those flimsy t-shirt style bags?
Yeah, it's anecdotal right now, but the county program has developed a tool that actually sort of feeds to a GIS system so that the maintenance people, once they're up and running with the tool, which they're not yet, they'll be able to put that, those data in on the spot, but we're not doing that now. It's anecdotal. And the guys know what's in there. You can ask them, "What's in there?" And they're like, 90% leaves. And then the other 10% is, you know, potato chip bags. Yeah, but we don't have documentation yet.
Do we have any issues with standing water in these drains? I know in San Francisco, they have a regular rotation where they dropped the, dropped the anti-mosquito.
Yeah, the Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District? The Mosquito Abatement District for Alameda County, they handle that for us, and they go around in Jeeps, and they have these long wands, and they take care of it. And that actually informs which inlet devices we can use, because if they can't get the wand through it, they don't approve it. So, but that's totally surmountable. We just make sure we do it their way. So we're gonna have to put more of those in. We do have a CIP item for, an approved CIP item for 20 more of these, and we're gonna be pushing harder on private properties to try and get to the 100%. The other thing we have in the CIP for about $500,000, we don't know if this is feasible yet. So what this is, is a large unit, costs about a half a million dollars to buy and install. It's subterranean, and you place it where a lot of systems drain together, and it, through a vortex separates the trash, and then the water carries on. So this is really good for getting large swaths of area, but you have to have the right site for it. If you have a lot of outfalls that don't connect, it's not that great a solution. It is better than the inlet devices in that it needs much less frequent maintenance. Maintenance is pretty easy, and it's just one instead of 50. And secondly, it captures sediment, which is important for our PCB targets. Those other ones don't capture PCB sediment at all. All right, and that gets me to, and the next significant, oh, before I do that, I wanted to show you this. This is part of our trash control efforts. These just arrived. These are called, these are called ballot bins, and they're for cigarette butts, and we've got five of them. We're gonna put them around in, mostly at bus stops and other high cigarette butt places. And you put a question, we can choose the questions that we put on there, and then people vote with their cigarette butt about which one, which one they like. And there are stories anecdotally. This is, these are from England, this is mostly in use in England, although I've heard that Boston has some. We're the first ones around here to have them. I've heard stories that people pick up butts off the street to vote for their voter, for their thing. So cigarette butts are a big problem in trash. They're very hard to pick up, and they are toxic, and they persist in the, in the water. So I'm excited about the ballot boxes, and if you've got ideas for questions for us to put on them, just let me know. Okay. So another, the green infrastructure part that is new in the MRP 2 is basically, it's largely aimed at controlling our TMDL materials, which are, which is the, basically, the materials that the bay is impacted for. You know, scientifically, we have two high levels of mercury and two high levels of PCBs. That's what this water body is impacted by. So we're, one of the ways that the regional water board is trying to get at that is by installing green infrastructure in the right-of-way to try and capture historical sediment, PCB-containing sediment. And so that's one of the main drivers for this whole green infrastructure requirement. I think this is you. So I'm gonna, so that's the sort of, that's the setting, that's the regulatory setting, and then Matt is gonna tell you about green infrastructure.
Nancy, can I ask you a question first?
Yeah, yeah.
On sediment, I understand the mercury and the PCBs, but is there any, do these filters account for sediment that when it drains into the bay area is offsetting the pH balance for the estuary habitats? You know, there's issues with some filters do not, you know, things, everything from like the street median to other things that private landscaping does, that stuff gets into storm drains, and then it slowly makes its way down to the bay, and it doesn't filter out into the bay the same way?
Well, the trash inlet device and the vortex unit don't. They don't address that at all. The vegetated treatment that the green infrastructure is and that we do on private parcels here, the C3 treatment we call it, that should, because it goes through several layers of vegetated soil, and it's pretty technical, but it is pretty clean by the time it gets down to our storm drain. And in some communities, they infiltrate it right into the groundwater. Here, we don't. We plummet out from the bottom of the treatment. So it, these ones should address the pH, although I don't have the technical data on me.
Okay.
Okay, all right, go ahead. Matt Anderson.
Thank you, Nancy. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, you should have received most of this in your fact sheet that you received for this agenda item, so I'll go over this very briefly. Green infrastructure, as she described, generally the vegetative infiltration and soils and natural processes to remove those contaminants from, well, right-of-way is what we're looking at here. It reduces the volume and the pollutants. Some examples around here are rain gardens, flow-through planters that we have on Adeline, tree well filters, perpious paving, green roofs, rainwater harvesting in use. Some of the items that we'll be needing in our green infrastructure plan will include guiding the identification, prioritization, implementation, tracking, and reporting of all of the green infrastructure projects within Emeryville. We will need to set goals for reducing long-term adverse water quality impacts of urbanization on receiving waters such as the bay. And it will need to be a guide and reporting tool to provide reasonable assurance that we will meet our goals for those load reductions. And last but not least, we will need to identify implementation targets for the years 2020, 2030, and 2040, consistent with the PCB and mercury load reductions that have been assigned. So kind of an overview of the relationship to pre-existing requirements. The first MRP indicated that projects exceeding specific size thresholds required to implement these C3 measures, it was 10,000 square feet or larger, except for specific cases. This continues on with this, but now we're required to look at, or plan for, looking at smaller projects. This green infrastructure planning that we're required to start will be for private developments. It'll be for our capital improvement projects, and we will also potentially get credit for past projects, and if required, we will also have to do additional green infrastructure projects to meet the mandated requirements or load allocations. So as she described, we're in a regional working group, so the Clean Water Program will be taking some of the items for us. They'll be developing the template or the framework of tasks and doing the schedule for all of the municipalities of the green infrastructure plan development. They are the ones that allocate the different targets for the different cities, Emeryville included. They are the ones that are developing the tool that she mentioned earlier to map the, not just the stormwater drains, but the parcels and the different types of green infrastructure projects, and they'll be developing standard guidelines and specifications. They'll be helping to identify training workshops for agency staff, and they'll be assisting developing a template for us. Emeryville, as part of this plan, will be, has several requirements. Specifically, we have to develop a framework for the plan development and approve that framework by the 30th of June this year. We have to educate staff and elected officials, as we're starting to do here. We have to update all of our planning documents to include green infrastructure requirements. A few examples of those would be our complete streets policy, our general plan, pedestrian-bicycle plan, our design guidelines, and several others. We have to update our CIP planning process. We have to identify and prioritize our funding options, because this mandate is not funded at this time. And we need to fund public projects if needed to meet our goals, and we need to adopt a public, a legal mechanism to implement the plan and get that approved to ensure that we will meet our load allocations. So three, well, two dates that are important. June 30th is when we have to adopt that framework, and September 30th, 2019, is when the plan must be submitted to the Regional Quality, Water Quality Board, and that must include that legal mechanism for adopting, for ensuring compliance of the plan. So just to go over that very briefly, I won't take any more of your time here. So with the regional working group, they have broken down some of the requirements and resources that will be needed to complete this plan and to complete the framework. They have estimated that the time will be between 5,000 to 2,000 hours, depending on city size and intricacy, where a staff is estimating approximately 500 hours of senior staff time, or a part-time intern for two years to complete the staff, to complete the plan. Currently, we don't have staff capacity to work on this plan, so there are options to do, to acquire the intern for half-time FTE for two years. The other option would be to hire a consultant for approximately $75,000, which would be 375 hours at approximately $200 an hour, which is the average rate, plus we would need staff time in public works, planning, and the attorney's office to complete all of the requirements. Beyond the plan, the actual implementation, the current estimates for Emeryville's requirements will be between 53 and 163 acres of treatment required by 2040, and the rural flum we're going by is 5% of that must be in the public right-of-way, which means that we'll have 2.65 to 8.15 acres in public, or in the public right-of-way that will be required. There is a potential there for private partnership. In, some private projects can do in lieu compliance. If they can't complete their stormwater treatment measures on their own projects, they can do it in public right-of-way, and that's an ongoing discussion with, with different developments. So the framework for the plan is on your agenda tonight, and the Public Works has requested an intern position for the green infrastructure plan development, and the plan development will begin in 2017 and 2018. So the next steps are to adopt the resolution, to adopt the framework, and if there are any questions, I or Nancy are happy to answer them at this time.
I have a question about whether the unincorporated county areas around the bay are required to do the same thing, and how are they managing to do it financially, given that some of these areas are so large?
The unincorporated areas are required. The allocation of, basically the requirement is done on a population basis, so they get a little help there, because the, a lot of the unincorporated areas are rural, not all, but a lot of them are. We're all struggling with funding. There is no funding, and as Michael knows, we are party to a, to a case that is moving through the courts now, based on the first MRP in, as an unfunded mandate case, but it's crawling along, and there's no resolution in sight, but it's still active.
Thank you.
I have two questions. First, Matt, thank you for joining our environmental and public works department and working on this. The 2.65 to 8.15 acres in the public right-of-way, do we have any that qualify immediately today towards that requirement?
Do you mean completed ones, or?
Do we have any acreage that immediately qualifies for the standard set? I'm seeing a head nod, so I'm just curious how much.
Yes, well, potentially. We haven't verified whether the projects retroactively back to 2002 will be included in that, although they've indicated that is a likelihood. So if those are, then we would be able to include the planters along Adeline and some of the other street planters that we have. I don't have specific acreage for you right now, but I can get that for you if you'd like.
Okay, and then my question is for whomever on staff. State mandated, local program, you know, this is, this is a mandate, and so they should be funding this. So my question is, do we even know at the offset here, like what the early range of estimated cost is? Because if, for some reason, they don't refund this mandate, you know, we have to budget this, and so I'm just curious what that range is.
Sure, so they, we gave you kind of the estimates for the time to develop, or the money to develop the plan, and those are the options there, and they've given a very rough estimate at this time of approximately $365,000 per acre to do green infrastructure projects. It really depends on if it's standalone or if it's with other projects, and it can vary pretty widely.
So $365,000 per acre, and we have a minimum of 53 acres we have to do?
We have approximately 5% of those 53 are, need to be in the public right-of-way, so the rest of those can be private development. So we do need to hit that large target, but likely, hopefully, the rest of that will be done privately. And if that's not done privately, then we need to make up the rest, but we are looking at only, well, we are, hopefully only have to do that 5% in the public right-of-way. And so that's what we're budgeting for at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, this might be more of a public works question, but I'm wondering if we have any parameters or limits for our current green infrastructure projects, like our bioswales, in terms of what herbicides and pesticides we use in the maintenance program?
We haven't been using herbicides or pesticides to maintain those bioswales to date, although, you know, we do get a lot of weeds around town, and we're susceptible to have, to keep those areas well-maintained. So that's something we would want to consider, but you probably wouldn't want to use those products in the stormwater treatment measures, because that's gonna drain directly to the bay, so.
Yeah, I imagine that that would be part of, you know, what, part of any plan that we would develop. I was just wondering what, where we're at now in terms of herbicides and pesticides, so we're not using any in our bioswale.
We don't have an integrated pest management plan. We do follow the requirements of bay-friendly plantings, which allow for some herbicides to be used, but whatever we would use would be following the bay-friendly guidelines.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Is there a provision under this obligation that allows us to pass this on to private developers without having to amend our development program regulations?
I should say that the marketplace is putting in all their infrastructure following these guidelines, so we have all the green infrastructure, all the stormwater treatment measures are being put in for the streets. Sherwin-Williams will be doing the same thing. We just did the bike lane on Christie Avenue that incorporates all the stormwater treatment measures as well. So it's, whenever we're expanding streets or building infrastructure where we don't have it right now, we would be considering these guidelines that we have to develop. And we've already, ahead of the game, we've been trying to implement the stormwater treatment measures ahead of having to have this framework in place.
So once these guidelines are in place, that will be a separate and mandatory obligation on any private developer that does not need to impact the current development system? It's not gonna be viewed as a community benefit or come off of an impact fee? It will be a separate existing obligation, is that right?
I guess in some regard, yes. For example, there's some improvements that Sherwin-Williams would be building, new sidewalks along the Park Avenue district. Those would need to be built following these guidelines.
Okay.
Thank you. And do we have some public testimony about this study session or public questions? Mr. Carpio? Mr. Carpio?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Carpio. I have two questions. And the first question is, of course, question of money. I see those guys call consultant, they charge $200 an hour, and I just like to have a description and duty of their job for that kind of money. You know, I don't see anybody of us only making that kind of income, you know? So can I be a consultant? Well, anyway, the second question is that on all the presentation here, I didn't see anything that has been mentioned about the pollution and how you are going to deal with the pollution that is caused by, and is a byproduct of all the roofing material. Roofing materials are petroleum product, bitumen, whatever you want to call it, and I don't want to run the chemistry here, but if you want to have an idea, how about making a bucket and collecting a bucket out of bitumen, roofing material, collecting the water and wash yourself in it, or cook with it, or drink it, see what you tell me about it. So I don't see anything here that's going to deal with the decay of the roofing material, not only the decay on short and long term, but also in the manipulation of the roofing material, all the pilates, all the dust, everything that comes, which basically is trash and other aggregate. There is some asbestos in the old-fashioned Bakelite and all that, and some sand, and also some aggregate material that you just will not put in your coffee like sugar. So what I'm saying is that here, they have overlooked the main pollution problem that runs into the rainwater, the storm rainwater, or the stormwater, whatever you want to call it. it, which is caused by the deterioration of the roofing material. And of course, I have made a solution, I have a stainless steel roof, but who else has that, huh? Thank you.
Yes, if you have an answer.
Thank you, Mr. Carpio, that's a good question. The roofing material and any other sort of fugitive material, including this PCB sediment from the old days that we still have around, that's exactly what this green infrastructure requirement is sort of meant to capture. The things that are not on a site that's being developed where we can put the treatment measures on the site, it's the stuff that is flowing into the street from the project, from the parcels, or is already in the street from historical sediment. So that's what they're thinking about. Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. This adjourns the public study, the special study session. Onto the successor agency. Do we need to do a roll call? Okay. Is there public comment for consent, the consent agenda, or items not on the agenda for the successor agency? Okay, Mr. Carpio.
This is a general question here of something that doesn't exist anymore, in which we had access, and this is the redevelopment money funds. And I'm talking about the recent fire we had, two on the same site, and it's devastating. I'm really shocked that fire building just goes up like that. I'm not questioning who did it and how, what, and all that, but if we study the chemistry of combustion, like I used to teach that in engine efficiency, there is something that hasn't been taken care of, and I'm not going to go into the flame propagation and things like that. But here, we all lose in material, in labor, in equipment, and trauma. When I saw that the second time, it really bothers me. The first time, I did consult with a city employee here, and I did ask questions, and I did not know if those questions were answered the way I wanted to hear it. So, do you have, or I would like to find out if you have any plan to prevent such a dramatic, you know, intense drama. This is real bad, so I want you to know that, I'm shocked. Thank you.
Any ex parte communications about the successor agency?
No.
Move the consent calendar.
I have a second.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Bouders, seconded by Councilmember Potts. Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Potts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bouders?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye. That adjourns the successor agency agenda. Now, we are on to the regular council agenda. We have a roll call that we could do for the regular council meeting. Is that necessary?
Did you want to start with your call to order and oath and song?
Oh, yes, I do.
Did you want to participate, Sheri?
I always do.
I solemnly pledge that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, as I discharge my duties as a city council member for the city of Emeryville. This land is your land, this land is my land, from California to the New York island, from the redwood forest to the Gulf Stream waters, this land was made for you and me.
Before we do a roll call, I just want to acknowledge Maurice Kaufman's significant contribution to our city. Just this last Bike to Work Day, we were there with many other cyclists admiring a significant piece of improvement for our city that you really helped initiate, the Emeryville Greenway. And I just want to thank you for following through on the details, knowing engineering taken to the natural world, meaning you were really on top of all the vegetation, you really looked out, and I can really say that that has been a significant improvement in our city and proven to be a major success. And thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Donahue, may I just chime in and say?
Oh, absolutely.
First of all, I totally echo everything that everybody has said about Maurice. I just want to note that I just recently learned that the Greenway that you just mentioned is being honored with an award from the American Planning Association as a great place in America.
Okay, with that, maybe we should do a roll call, or is that not necessary?
I think the previous one can stand for now.
I would like to approve our final agenda here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, I'm happy to make the motion. If I can recommend that we adjourn the meeting in memory of longstanding Emeryville member, community member, Richard Ambrose.
I second that.
Sorry, I wanted to pull consent item 10.8.
Do we do that now, Sheri?
You have the consent.
You can do that now, or you could do it when you approve the consent calendar.
Either way.
You say 10.8?
10.8, yeah.
I wanted to pull that, too.
There you go. So I'll pull it now, and you can pull it in consent.
So let's consider that a motion that includes pulling that item.
And I'll also consider that the second, then.
Yeah, Scott has the second.
Okay, now.
All right.
I second.
Then moved by Councilmember Martinez, seconded by Councilmember Pat, to approve the final agenda with pulling consent item 10.8 and adjourning in memory of Richard Ambrose.
Excellent.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Potts?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bouders?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye. Okay, special orders of the day. In commemoration of June as Elder Abuse Awareness Month in the city of Emeryville, and June 15th as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, we would like to honor some people here who are going to talk about this.
Mr. Mayor, and members of the Emeryville City Council and the Emeryville community, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening briefly on a topic that is anything but brief. My name is Cheryl Poncini. I'm a deputy district attorney in the Alameda County DA's office, elder protection unit. And on behalf of my office and DA Nancy O'Malley, we want to thank you for the last several years issuing proclamations recognizing June as Elder Abuse Awareness Month and June 15th as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Emeryville. Last year, you issued your proclamation in perpetuity, so it's not necessary to actually issue a paper proclamation any longer, but we are glad that you're taking a few moments to recognize this important topic. Also here today is Lisa Brand from Alameda County Adult Protective Services, and she also will address you in just a moment. When I have had the opportunity to speak to various city councils and the county board of supervisors throughout Alameda County regarding this topic, I have noted that elder abuse and neglect exists locally, nationally, and internationally, and will likely continue, because at least it's to the US, the number of baby boomers aging is increasing each year. As that number increases, so too does the potential for abuse and neglect because of the vulnerability of older individuals. In the past, I've talked about the need for collaboration amongst agencies, working together to help investigate, and when necessary, prosecute these cases. And I can assure you, having been in this division for the last five years, and particularly doing public outreach and trainings with law enforcement and various meetings, that there is excellent collaboration with law enforcement agencies, including the Emeryville Police Department, the County District Attorney's Office, and with Adult Protective Services. But we need to do more to raise public awareness that elder abuse and neglect exists, and that it takes many forms. We need to encourage people to report suspected abuse and neglect to law enforcement and/or Adult Protective Services. So I encourage members of the public to learn more about elder abuse and neglect. Attend forums, attend outreach programs which we hold at public libraries and senior centers. Check the district attorney's office website for any public forum organized by myself or my office. And if you are a member of a community organization or faith-based organization, contact me or Adult Protective Services and request a presentation. These presentations are free, and in an hour or two, we try to provide as much practical information about what elder abuse and neglect looks like and how to report it. After all, knowledge is power. The more we know, the less likely we will become victims of abuse and neglect, and those around us are less likely to become such victims. On your desk, you should each have a copy of our office trifold for our unit. In this very brief brochure, we talk about some, the sum, of the basic warning signs of different types of abuse and neglect, and some basic contact information. But as I said, there's only so much you can put in a trifold. Thank you again for recognizing June as Elder Abuse Awareness Month and June 15th as Elder Abuse Awareness Day. By doing so, you are helping to raise public awareness of this important topic here in Emeryville. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully, you can hear me okay? Thank you. I wanted to thank Mayor Donahue, council members, and the residents of Emeryville for their support of June as Elder Abuse Awareness Month and June 15th as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. Adult Protective Services wants to express our appreciation for your continued proclamation recognizing this day and this time. My name is Lisa Brand. I'm a representative of Alameda County Adult Protective Services, and we have been working for several years now with the Alameda County District Attorney's Office, Cheryl Poncini, Oakland Police Department, and other law enforcement jurisdictions in the county to address elder abuse and neglect in Alameda County. I want to extend a compliment to Emeryville Police Department, because I am often the after-hours supervisor, and I receive calls from them, sometimes two in the morning, and that's fine, because we'd rather hear from them than not, and they do an excellent job. So I want to say thank you for that. You'll see that I'm wearing a purple ribbon, and I, or kind of lavender-purple ribbon, that is in recognition of Elder Abuse Awareness Month. I have left some with the city clerk, and hopefully she has distributed them. I encourage you to wear them this month and to talk about elder and dependent adult abuse during this month to others that you may come in contact with, because, as Cheryl said, knowledge is power, and it does take a village, okay, to address this problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Our second proclamation.
Wait, did you read the first one?
Oh, Mr. Carpio.
Did we read the first one?
That's not a proclamation, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
First one was.
This is something I could not pass. I mean, I don't want to insult people here, but this is pretty hypocritical. This lady is talking about elder abuse. You people put me homeless! And another friend of mine, Ellen Toon, she's a Holocaust survivor, she was kicked out of my house on so-called imminent collapse, that's two years ago. You people must be nuts! Insane!
Proclamation of the city council, the city of Emeryville, recognizing the month of May as Small Business Month in Emeryville. Whereas on May 1st, 2017, California Governor Edmund G. Brown Jr. issued a proclamation declaring May 2017 as Small Business Month in the state of California, and whereas a sustained culture of creativity and entrepreneurship has made the city of Emeryville a center of art and innovation in the state, and whereas Emeryville's small businesses produce technologies and make discoveries that improve the well-being of people around the world, and whereas Emeryville's small businesses create jobs and contribute to the city's unique culture, and whereas the city of Emeryville has over 600 small businesses operating in the city, and these firms employ over 20% of the city's workforce, and whereas the total revenue of these small businesses exceeds $900 million annually, representing a significant contribution to the city's economy, and whereas the city's general plan calls for the city to retain and foster the growth of Emeryville businesses, and to encourage establishment of businesses that will employ and serve Emeryville residents. And whereas this month, we reaffirm our commitment to helping Emeryville's small businesses launch and prosper as a strategy to maintain and enhance the city's livability, expand job opportunities, and increase our competitive advantage in the marketplace. Now, therefore, it be resolved that I, Scott Donahue, Mayor, the city of Emeryville, on behalf of the city council and the city of Emeryville, proclaim the month of May as Small Business Month in the city of Emeryville. Proclaim the 16th day of Emeryville 2017. We don't have a presentation, I guess, about that.
We were possibly just going to have Mr. Smalley accept it on behalf of our business, our small business community.
Okay, would Mr. Smalley come forward and accept that? By the way, that was a great presentation today at our small business planning and council listening session. Thank you for that today.
Well, and thank you, and I just want to, the city council deserves a lot of credit for the support it's putting behind the small business community in Emeryville. I can tell you that the community appreciates it. It was a great meeting today, so thanks to you all for participating, and looking forward for great things to come.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Announcements of commission and vacant, committee vacancies.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, later on in your agenda, you will make appointments to some unexpected vacancies, just to fill those terms out until they expire. And then, we currently have an application period that's open for all expiring terms on all of our commissions and committees. It is open until June 5th, and you can easily find that application online. It's very simple to fill out. We encourage people that are interested to fill out an application before June 5th, and you will make those appointments at your meeting on June 20th.
Councilmember special announcements. Mr. Bouders?
I have a few. First, to just follow up with what Chad said, I wanted to thank everybody who participated in the preparation of the Small Business Forum today. There were 60 small businesses that attended a joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the City Council today. It was extremely productive. We got a lot of very good ideas. A broad range of viewpoints were shared, and I just really want to appreciate the work that staff put into bringing that particular item to fruition today, and for everybody who helped with that. Couple other quick items. Mayor Donahue and I had the opportunity to participate in the California Arts Council Walk Through yesterday. The tour was over three hours. I want to appreciate staff who did a lot of things. Catherine Furpo came out and was last-minute courier for a member of the committee who was getting tired of walking Emeryville. She had done the morning in Oakland, and so we had a really, really positive experience. I want to thank all the members of the 45th Street Co-op, including the mayor, who really showed this council what Emeryville's artist community is about. I want to take the moment to thank Alameda County Fire Department, Emeryville Police, Oakland Fire, and ATF for their work with respect to 3800 San Pablo. They've been working incredible hours, and it's a very bad situation that we've experienced, but I also want to thank Rick Holliday for sticking through with us, and was very impressed at the professionalism of our emergency response and the construction crews who worked to make that situation safe for us on Saturday evening, and for the patience of all the residents who were awoken after midnight and asked to move to a safe location for that demolition. We greatly appreciate your cooperation. And then finally, I just want to thank Noah and Max, who are eighth-grade students at Esquela Bilingue here in Emeryville, who are doing a regional project on homelessness, and just want to give them a shout-out.
Anyone else for council?
I will just want to recognize staff members, let's see, Nancy Humphrey, I don't know if she's still in the room, as well as our former Civic Spark intern fellow, excuse me, Hui Fei Maok, our current Civic Spark fellow, Fanny Yang, and our intern, Matt Anderson, for a presentation that they gave yesterday, right, to a Chinese delegation on best practices for what we're doing to address climate change here in Emeryville. So it was extensive, it was well-received, and I want to thank them for a job well-done.
Okay, it's time for a public comment for consent agenda items, or items not on the agenda for this meeting.
Rob Arias, EvilEye.com. Also wanted to acknowledge Richard Ambrose, longtime community member. Really saddened to hear about that. When I first started writing the Evil Eye, one of my neighbors, Ben Yi, gave me a big box of Emeryville Historical Society articles and, or journals, and I've been slowly kind of thumbing through those, and one of the ones is the Emeryville Centennial, the 100-year big book, big, thick binder, full of articles that I have not all read, but I noticed that Richard's name was in there. So he clearly made a contribution. I know he's had a lot of pride in being an archaeologist, he always mentioned that. Didn't know too much about him, but I intend to read some of those articles and understand a little bit more about him, so really sad to hear that. Anyway, regarding the Emeryville Historical Society that I just mentioned, sent you all an email. John replied back to me. A very generous gesture was made by Rich Robbins of Wareham to provide a grant to hopefully help kick-start, reinvigorate the Emeryville Historical Society, and looking maybe for some matching funds from the city to reboot that, you know? I mean, it's still going strong, but I think, you know, it's, needs to come into the digital age, you know, maybe get some of those articles and pictures online. I mean, there's a lot of things that can be done, and I hope that this council will take that serious and help move that forward, you know? Once our history's gone, it's gone forever. I mean, those pictures are just invaluable, and they're sitting in a closet in Oakland. I mean, it's, it's kind of embarrassing, you know, that our history is just relegated to a closet, basically, so. Also wanted to acknowledge the Small Business Study Session today. Yeah, the turnout was fantastic, you know? Been a long time coming. There's a lot of just festering wounds, you know, with open festering wounds with small businesses that I hope over time can be healed. Thanks, John, for following through on that. And yeah, I think a really solid gesture, if you're really serious about helping small businesses. And that fire is really going to hurt Monster Fo, Scarlet City. I just heard that Patatas, the new place that opened up, is opening up in the old Commonwealth place, just opened up, so that's a hell of a way to start your business, you know, by being in an area with construction crews and closed streets and, you know, not a desirable place for small business right now, so if there's any assistance for small business, I think that would be a very, very solid gesture to them. So anyway, I hope you'll follow through on this and the Emeryville Historical Society, please.
Mr. Carpeal?
I was caught by surprise. It's very sad, my friend, Richard Ambrose, when he passed away. At the beginning of the year, he did ask me to write a letter to the City Council explaining to him his financial situation, that he was really a poor man. We had lunch together every day at the senior center, and, well, he had a long history of being an archaeologist, and in his letter that I wrote for him, he was complaining about a box of artifacts from the Holo Native that are discovered when I dug around the surrounding of my well, which was the spring for the local Indian here. And he was shocked when the box was taken away and junk, trash, felt, whatever, and he was down, and I don't know if Mr. Geena remembered that, but that was one of the raids that the city came to my property to steal my submarine, and they took everything, including that box. And I did call Nora Davis at T for that, she's always seizure, you know, of course. But Richard Ambrose lived almost lots of his life on 64th Street, and what I would like to do is to have that street name on his name, to be Ambrose Street or Ambrose Avenue. The man was a professional archaeologist, well-known at UC Berkeley, he taught, and he was a fine gentleman, and he wanted to move with me, but since the house was red tarred, and that was also another sad story of his life, and he couldn't meet the rent increase. So I could tell you more about it, but it's a very sad situation. Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar with 10.8 being pulled?
Mr. Mayor, under the City Manager's Report...
Oh, my apologies.
That's okay. I wondered if I could give my time over to our police chief, Jennifer Tahada, who could give an overview of the tragic fire that occurred this last weekend. She was quite intensely involved, along with all of our members from PD.
That would be good.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. So as you're aware, we had a fire on Saturday morning that was ignited around just before 5:00 a.m. We received numerous 911 calls, and the entire building, which was in, under construction, was engulfed in flames in a very short period of time. We had over, I think approximately 100 fire personnel respond between Alameda County Fire Department and Oakland Fire Department. We also had Oakland Police Department, as well as our Police Department on scene within minutes. Fortunately, there were no injuries, just a couple of smoke inhalations that didn't require hospitalization, so we're very fortunate that such an enormous and tragic fire did not result in any injuries or worse. The, you know, I want to thank the mayor for coming out. You were there very early that morning, and it was very comforting to have you there and to share with you what was going on, and for you to see it firsthand, and you spent quite a good deal of time there Saturday morning, so we appreciate that, and staff appreciate seeing you there. And City Manager, you came out also on Saturday and were in constant contact, checking on us and resources, and it's so important when we're in the middle of something like that to know in the background we have people checking to make sure we're supported and that we're taken care of. So the, I guess I also want to mention that this was a significant collaborative effort with first responders from so many disciplines, not just the fire and Police Department, but also the Department of Public Works, planning, all of the departments in the city essentially have some sort of role in this, and this was very well orchestrated and seamless in terms of the response from everybody, including Red Cross. And then the community, I want to thank the community. We had some very heartfelt outreach from community members. We had one little family who came with their little red wagon full of bagels and coffee, and the little girl, I think her name was Cyrus, handed out coffee and bagels for firefighters and police officers, and then we had Lane Splitter. They opened up their business for us to use as a command post, and, you know, there were quite a lot of people involved in that, and so they were just so gracious and such great hosts to us. There were a lot of people in and out of there, a lot of meetings, a lot of intense conversations going on, and they just let us have that space. I want to thank the people of Avalon. They were certainly, their day was interrupted by this significantly, and they were very patient. The manager, Tammy, was really, really good at taking care of things and making sure everybody had what they needed for the evening. And so what we have now is, in a fire like this, unfortunately, we're very familiar with how this rolls out. The National Response Team from ATF comes out. They are experts. Alcohol, tobacco, and firearms and explosives is their expertise. This team is expertly trained in identifying the source of a fire, and that's their purpose. They will be here, the last time they were here for nine days. The day starts with a briefing at the Police Department around 7:00, 8:00 a.m., depending on how long it takes stragglers to come in in the morning, and then we have a debrief at the end of the day at 5:30 p.m. The training room is devoted to this incident for the entirety of the investigation, and so we will, when they're done, they will make a determination about the source of the fire, whether it was accidental, whether it was intentional, or maybe it will be undetermined. Those are the three outcomes of their work. When they're done, if they determine that it was deliberate, a deliberate act of arson, then we will take over and we will do the investigation using the evidence and work that they've done. They're busy out there in the community interviewing all of the surrounding neighbors, all of the businesses, so I'd like to ask for anyone in the community who has video footage of that area or nearby, if they would contact us and allow us to either view it or give it to us if possible, but even if it's just to come to their business or residence and view the video, it would be really helpful to us, and anybody, of course, that has any information, anything that seems suspicious or just out of place, or even not just the day of the fire, but before the fire, that somebody might be looking to see how they might access that building to start a fire, that would be very helpful to us. So I want to thank the community as well. Generally, when you close down traffic intersections, you get a lot of pushback from people who are hell-bent on getting to where they're going through your barricades and through your people, and we didn't have any of that. The community was very, very understanding and really didn't, you know, interrupt our mission that day and since then. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Well, I just would like to say that I've got some phone calls that, that day with upset neighbors to the site, and they were understandably upset. This investigation is going to be rigorous. The amount of data we already have compared to the first fire is significantly greater because of the greater number of video cameras that were on site. Also, there were two guards on site this time. Our evidence right now is being protected by, I understand, four guards right now, and that the investigation is going to be thorough. The federal government has abilities to do this kind of significant research utilizing dogs that specifically have been trained to smell for accelerants. It's sort of taken apart, layer by layer, and that you and the public need to have some patience with us for conducting this necessary investigation, and it takes time, and this is something our city has to get through. We must get through this. We cannot just let this stand the way it is now, so we must follow through. So I'm asking for patience right now, because I think we need it.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to say anything about this?
No, thank you, Chief.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chief. I just want to thank you, Mayor Donahue, because I know what Chief Tahada said. I know you were up very early, and you called me very late on Saturday night, and you really followed through on this and have really worked very closely with staff, and I just really want to applaud your leadership on making sure this is a patient and deliberate process, which all of our law enforcement and emergency personnel are doing in concert with, so thank you.
Are there ex parte communications about the consent calendar or any items going forward? I think this is our time to...
Yes. Yeah, so on 11.1, regarding the DDA for 3706 San Pablo, I exchanged emails with Mary Murtaugh of EAH Housing.
Myself as well.
I actually spoke with him on the phone.
I spoke on the phone as well.
Nope.
So we have a, we have the approval of the consent agenda to vote on. We have a first, second?
So I'll move the consent calendar.
Let's see.
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second already, so we...
All right, was that Councilmember Pats that moved?
It was.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Pats, seconded by Vice Mayor Bouders.
Sure, I'll do that, second.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I heard murmurs.
Suggestive, suggestive motions helps.
And that is with the understanding that we're pulling item 10.8?
That's right.
Correct.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bouders?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye. Okay, 10.8. Okay, 10.8.
Mayor, did you have anything that you wanted to say? I see your name under here, but I don't know if you just maybe got an action alert from the League of Cities to put this...
Yes, I...
...calendar.
We're a small city, and this Assembly Bill, if it were to pass, would make our lives difficult in our city. We are not a large city, and this Assembly Bill is basically asking to put a lot of onerous limitations on us being able to contract out for particular services that our city needs. And I just don't see how any small city can function if this Assembly Bill passes. So I think we should vote to oppose it.
Okay. I'm, at this time, not comfortable supporting this bill. I...
Supporting or opposing it? Because it's a motion to oppose.
Sorry, sorry. Supporting the letter with the motion to oppose. I'm also not comfortable supporting it yet. I, just reading through the materials and taking a look at who has registered support and opposition, I see the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees in support. I see the California State Council, the Service Employees International Union, California Labor Federation, folks who generally have the backs of workers. And in opposition, you know, I see, as you've stated, several small cities, some larger cities as well, and the California Chamber of Commerce, which I'm just, I get the sense that the authors of this bill are looking out for the best interests of those working in municipalities like ours, and I don't feel comfortable stating opposition to that at this point.
I'd like to echo what Diane said and also note that this bill's in suspense, so maybe if it goes onto the floor, then we can retake up a consideration of it.
What did you say?
The bill's in suspense right now, if I'm not mistaken. And so perhaps if it does actually move forward to the floor, then we can really get the final price tag from appropriations and discuss it in greater depth.
You know, I just, I asked for this to be pulled simply because I'm not for the privatization of government work. And so this really is taking a look at what cities are doing. We're moving away from doing things ourselves to handing it off to the private sector. And, you know, I think we're even, the last version of the bill that I saw put the cap at $500,000 contracts. So while there is some burden, and I think that number has moved, but there is some impetus for it, and that I support that idea that, you know, let's keep cities employing people, not, you know, moving towards a gig economy. So for that reason, I do not support the letter opposing the bill.
Okay. Obvious that there's not support for a letter of opposition.
Do we need to take an action?
Only if it gets moved.
Do we need to call for public comment on it, because it was pulled from the consent calendar?
Is public comment necessary? I mean, there was a call previously for public comment.
This was pulled prior to the call.
You may always take public comment on an action, on an item that you're considering. And the typical policy of the council is to allow for public comment.
Okay, public comment on this issue. Mr. Carpio.
First, that Assembly Bill is going to affect the public. And here, you plan to take an action and the public has not been informed. I don't know what's going on. Did you made available something in which I could read and understand and ask question? No, you didn't. You just debate among yourself, and that's going to affect the life of the employee and the second party, us. So I would say that you should postpone that letter until public, like myself, be made aware of the content of the letter and the intention, unless, if you don't do that, then I don't think it's fair. Thank you.
Anyone else? So how do we proceed from here? Since there's three people speaking against it, it's, I guess we should say that it is not...
I think you can call for a motion.
Yeah. So I'm not calling for a motion.
Call for it, and if there is none, then you can pass the item. I think that's the correct thing, is to call, see if there is a motion. If there's no motion, we pass it.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, there's a call for a motion. Seeing none, the rest of the consent calendar passes.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a point of clarification for those watching? There are materials available in this agenda, attachments to item 10.8, if you would like to review the draft letter online, Mr. Carpio.
We have a public hearing. So 11.1.
Open it. Mr. Mayor, gavel in. Gavel.
Mayor Donahue, City Council members, I'm Catherine Furpo, Housing Coordinator with the City Community Development Department. Just a moment while I get the PowerPoint up.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Catherine Furpo, I'm with the City's Community Development Department. We are here tonight to talk about 3706 San Pablo, a rental housing project, proposed rental housing project. There's quite a few pieces of this resolution, and staff report, we'll get to them later in detail. This is the background on this project is that it is bounded by San Pablo Avenue, West MacArthur Boulevard, 37th Street, and private property to the east. It's vacant except for an existing outdoor billboard, which will be removed in advance of construction. This is the site plan for the proposed affordable housing project. The background is that in 2013, the City Council authorized the city manager to negotiate an ERN with EAH Incorporated. In 2015, the Planning Commission approved the project. And again, in 2015, City Council authorized the city manager enter into an exclusive ground lease disposition and development agreement, the DDA, with EAH. In 2016, the city committed to provide $3.5 million to EAH as development subsidy, and in 2016, the city committed to providing an additional $1 million for a total loan amount of $4.5 million. The project is six stories. It has about 6,000 square feet of commercial space on San Pablo. It has 87 residential rental units. Eighty-six of them are restricted households with low and very low income. There's one manager's unit. Eleven units are reserved for special needs population, and onsite residential services and management will be included in the project. There's 108 parking spaces, and the amenities include a podium-level courtyard, a fourth-floor roof patio, active and passive children's play equipment, an onsite management office, a resident services office, and community rooms. Here is a rendering of the community space. It's not exactly as it was in the final building permit, but it's very nearly the same. Here is a rendering of the interior courtyard. The units are predominantly family housing units. Only 14% of the units are studios and one-bedrooms. The rest are two, three, and four-bedroom units. These are the first four-bedroom units we have that are BMRs, and we're getting seven out of this project, and there is a need for large family housing in the Bay Area. We find this quite often when we have BMRs available. The families are too large for the units that are available, so we're very excited to have some large family units. The units are affordable. Thirty percent of them are affordable, people at 30% area median, 10 at 40, 41 at 50, and 19 at 16. As you can see, I put in an income for a family of three, because that's sort of the average size, that these are very low-income. And in addition to this, we have 32 project-based Section 8 units in this project, where people only have to pay 30% of their income for their housing regardless of what the affordable rents are. The development costs are quite high on this project, $68 million, $40 million, I will get to that. In relation to the development costs, I want to point out that we are actually, and it's the city's policy, to hire our own construction monitor to keep track of the project, and that will come to you in a contract next council meeting. The permit sources of funding for this nearly $70 million project, the city is putting in the land, which is worth approximately $4 million. And again, we have an Emeryville loan for $4.5 million. The conventional first mortgage and the tax credit equity are about $40 million, and those are being provided by Wells Fargo, amongst many other lenders, including other government sources and our partners in Oakland and Alameda County, Oakland Housing Authority and the Alameda County Housing Authority. There is one correction in the resolution. The city will use 87 units of the city's 100-unit Article 34 authority. HCD requires this. There are some proposed amendments to the DDA since the last time it came to, to extend the lease and affordability covenant from 55 to 75 years, provide for lease for loss of Section 8 and income or foreclosure, approve EAH as a management company, partner's right to cure, and miscellaneous modifications that are available in your red line document. Our recommendation today is to adopt the proposed resolution as modified by the staff's recommendation regarding the Article 34 authority. And the proposed resolution does the following. It approves the First Amendment to the DDA. It approves EAH's assignment of interest in the DDA to the ownership entity. Approves the loan in the amount of $4.5 million. It appropriates that additional $1 million from the Affordable Housing Impact Fee Funds, and it authorizes the city manager into a loan agreement with the ownership entity. Wells Fargo and EAH are here if you have any questions for them.
Okay, thank you.
Any clarifying questions? All right.
The public comment on this proposal? Yes.
I wanted to fill the council in on our email conversation with Councilmember Bouders, who raised a very good question, I thought, and I wanted to make sure everybody was comfortable with our answer. He was concerned that in the event of foreclosure, that residents might be displaced, so I wanted to put his mind and your mind at ease with regards to the fact that, you know, for, just as an introduction, our goal as a nonprofit is to keep people housed and keep people stable in housing. We always go to great lengths to prevent evictions in the first place and to try to forestall them if things are deteriorating with any particular resident, provide a lot of resident services to that effect. But also, in our 49-year history, we've never had a foreclosure or a loan modification. We have a very competent property management group, which manages 9,000 units in two states and 50 cities, and they were known for having one of the most stable portfolios in the affordable housing industry. We're very careful about how recapitalize our projects. And in fact, we'll have $675,000 guarantee posted in the event that there's any difficulties with making debt coverage. We have very strict debt coverage ratios with the bank that the bank is enforcing, and these guys are very tough. The commercial side of Wells does not mess around. In fact, you guys are a little bit too much trouble sometimes, just for the record. Anyway, they do a very good job. They're extremely thorough in their underwriting. There's also almost $1 million of additional reserve funds available, but we do not anticipate any difficulties in operating the building as projected. We've studied the operating costs very carefully. We understand the rents, and we are not going to have any difficulties meeting debt coverage and operating the building. So our goal is to get it built and make you proud for the collective effort of all of the staff and elected officials of the five government agencies who have been working so hard on this project, and we greatly appreciate your support. But if you have any further questions, Matt Steinle, our residing financial genius, and Welton Jordan are both here from our staff, and they can answer anything in detail. So thank you for your time.
Kill. Any further questions?
Mr. Carpio.
Mr. Carpio.
I do not know, and I didn't see any provision that has been made for solar power. Is the roof has been structured to adaptation of solar panels about the energy? I mean, who's going to pay for the energy? I mean, I don't know if the energy supply is going to be gas or electricity. I don't see it. Then the other thing I see is the parking. How come the parking is not on the ground? We are above sea level, and we are killing valuable space to put cars. You have hundred parking and so, but you have eighty apartment, and this is, if you have an apartment with two people who have different job, they have different car. So right there, you have the crush for parking space, and so there is a limitation. I see that on my street, on Ocean Avenue. It's a real battle to find a parking there. And we have no underground parking garage on the housing, so everybody is on the street and spill all over. And so I really think that the parking, the way it looks like, the way it sounds like, I don't need to make lots of mathematics, but if you have two people living and you have three and four bedroom, it's not all children. If they are going to be adult, maybe adult, then if they have different car, then they have to go someplace. Of course, they may, they no problem if they have bicycle, but if it's local, it's okay. But if you have to go out of town, you need a car. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I closed the public hearing.
Should I move the item?
I just have a couple of comments. I wanted to first thank you, Mary, and everyone at EAH for engaging me on my concerns about displacement and sharing with everybody your long history on this issue. We're, you know, we're building family housing for very low-income families, and that's a great thing for the city of Emeryville to do. And I also want to thank, although it goes into the DDA as a minor change, I want to thank all the members of the DDA negotiation team for working to make sure that we don't have simply 90 days provision, that we're going to have six months of provision, and what we don't expect to have happen, happens, gives me a great deal of confidence that we're doing the right by the tenants, and so I appreciate that. And then finally, I just want to condemn Donald Trump and his administration. It seems easy to do these days. We think about what he's done to the EPA. We think about what he's done to education and other things, but what's getting missed here is the uncertainty being created in the tax world has really significantly undermined the value of tax credits and investor confidence in affordable housing options, which has made financing this project a nightmare for all of you. And so getting to this finish line came with a lot of heartburn, and thank you. And so getting to this finish line came with a lot of heartburn, and thank you for sticking through to the end on this project.
I'm really excited to support more affordable housing coming in anywhere in the Bay Area. Really excited that we have large, family-friendly units. I think it's a fantastic project for Emeryville and exactly what we need.
I was surprised to hear at our joint study session with the Planning Commission this morning that so many small business owners cited affordable housing as one of the biggest problems that they're facing with their workforce and the complex web of pressures that we have on our businesses and our families in the Bay Area. I was happy to hear that there's an awareness around it, and I was happy that Vice Mayor Bowders was able to bring up this project as one of the solutions that Emeryville is looking at to take some of the pressure off.
And also the long commutes from where people can afford to live to their workplaces.
Greenhouse gases, yep.
We also note that it's really on a major transit corridor, and that it should be a lot easier to not drive your car from that address. So I think that this is a win for our environmental profile as a city.
All right.
Should we move the DDA? Is it a read-by-title?
No, this is not, this is not an ordinance. This is just a resolution, so.
Move the resolution as modified by staff recommendation?
And I'll second that one.
That's fine.
No, I'm sorry. I was recommending that you do that.
No, 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 no. I do not, I do not need to motion that. I think that's a great motion.
Good motion.
It's a great motion.
I'll make it a motion.
I support that.
Moved by Councilmember Martinez, seconded by Councilmember Pats. Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowders?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Committee appointments to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee.
You know, I want to apologize to anyone who's here. We should have moved these up earlier, if there are any people to be appointed. And I want to apologize for myself for not catching that. I was reading through the things, and it didn't dawn on me that they might be sitting in the audience, so I'm sorry if you've been waiting until now to hear this. Is anybody here, am I apologizing to an empty room? I have one person. So thank you. Please take my apology.
Two?
Take my apologies, I'm sorry.
Three?
Yes. Okay.
So there's no staff presentation for these appointments. You'll just, for each one, see whether there's anybody here that would like to speak, that are the applicants, all of the applicants.
We've read the applicants' resumes, but would anybody like to get up and say something about their?
So let's do bike first.
Let's do bike. There's like three or four, so let's go.
Yeah, let's do bike, for the Bike Ped Advisory Committee. Is anyone here? Brian Donahue, Baruch Golden, Jaclyn Har, Evan Lovett Harris. Okay, seeing no one, I have a, I'd like to nominate someone for this position.
Take public comment before we nominate?
Oh, yes, public comment about these nominations. Seeing not, oh, Mr. Carpio?
I don't know if all people are being encouraged to ride bicycle. So, have you thought of allowing tricycle, motorized tricycle? So, like a wheelchair, but tricycle? You haven't seen that? You don't know anything about it? So anyway, this is something in which I like to try, and so if I lose balance, I'm not going to go spill over on the way of a vehicle. So I'll stay in between the three wheel. So, this is something that need not to be engineer. They already on the market. It's just like, we would have to make sure that it's available and that, you know, it's accessible also for, I mean, I'm not asking for funds for, but it's a possibility. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can we just make sure that they're not bike committee applicants?
Are either one of you nominated to the Bicycle and Pedestrian?
Applying to.
Would you like to say something before we?
Yeah, sounds good. Hi.
Would you say your name?
Absolutely, yeah. I'll raise the mic. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Right. Hi, my name's Evan Lovett Harris, and I'm applying to be on the Bike and Pedestrian Committee because for basically my whole life, I've been committed to bicycling. I also love walking. So I work right now for ExtraCycle, which makes cargo bikes, and my partner and I ride with our daughter all over town. And we notice intersections which are particularly dangerous, and I think that that perspective will help me work with others to make good decisions in terms of biking, and also, we walk everywhere. So we basically, we drive to go outside of town, but in town, we just walk and bike. The other thing I would say about myself is that I work well with other people, so I collaborate well, and I think that that's really important to get things done. So, those are the two main points. Do any of you have any questions?
I have a question.
Absolutely.
How did you know how to walk in here at the right moment for this?
The video's not even working.
We were watching the video before. Truthfully, it's pure luck. I'm so glad that you asked, so.
Well, thank you for applying.
For sure, yeah.
Yeah, I have no questions. Your resume was, I think, the longest one.
Lots of optimism.
I mean, I really believe in this, and so I just wanted to share sort of a little bit of my perspective.
I think you did a lot by showing up. That's half the war sometimes, but the enthusiasm in this very, very detailed, which I will be honest, I read the whole thing because I was like, oh my gosh, oh my gosh, oh my gosh. So I appreciate you coming out tonight, and I appreciate your passion for this issue, though. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'd like to nominate Evan Lovett Harris for this committee, but not just because his resume was so long, but also because you mentioned walking a lot. And, you know, this is a significant part of this committee, and we need committee members who really are willing to deal with the pedestrian side of our city. And so while your cycling credentials are unrivaled, your interest in being a pedestrian is really appreciated, and we need some of that input on that committee, I know. And so, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Donahue to nominate Evan Lovett Harris for the position, seconded by Vice Mayor Bowders. Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Enthusiastically, aye.
Vice Mayor Bowders?
Yes.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
Welcome to the committee.
Congratulations, and thank you.
See you, Rosen.
You have like the shortest tenure in a council meeting to get something done. You're like, in here for two minutes, and you can go away. It's like amazing.
The bike committee doesn't work that quick.
Yeah.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, for anybody, applicants who are listening who are not appointed tonight, don't despair because in only a few weeks, we will be doing our major reappointments and new appointments for expired seats. So your applications that were submitted for these vacancies will be thrown into that mix, and so you have another chance.
Yeah, I just want to publicly thank everyone who's applying to anything and encourage folks who don't make it on to any of our, any of our committees to please apply again and continue applying.
With that, let's talk about Parks and Recreation Committee. And is there anyone here who would like to talk about that? Please come forward.
Do we just have the one?
There's two. I think there's two applicants here.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Zoe Chaff. I'm an applicant for this committee, and I would enthusiastically like to participate in Emeryville's governance. I've lived in Emeryville for three years, and in terms of my day job, I work on climate change and public health. And part of that work involves understanding how we can mitigate climate change while improving public health. And some of the research that I've gone through shows that there is a strong linkage between having vibrant natural spaces and resilient communities and strong bonds between neighbors. As a mother of a young child, I use our parks a lot. Proximity to Doyle Hollis Park was one of the reasons that I chose to live in Emeryville in the first place. We use it probably every week, if not more than that. Stanford Park is another one, the Greenway and others. So I have a, you know, a strong interest in making sure that those parks are in the best shape that they can be and that they serve the needs of the most people in our community that they can. Earlier in the meeting, or I guess it was just before the meeting today, you talked about need for rainwater gardens and dealing with storm drainage, stormwater. And I think that there's a really strong opportunity to integrate that into the parks that we have in our city. It's already been done a little bit in Doyle Hollis Park, but I think we can do that across the board and try and bring more of that perspective when we bring in new parks and expand the parks that we have. So I'd be happy to work on that. The other part is that my child will soon be enrolling in swim lessons at the new ECL pool, so I have a strong interest in making sure that the Recreation Department and the Recreation Programs serve the needs of not only our family, but many other families. I found it a bit frustrating that sometimes it's difficult to get information about what's available in our city in terms of recreation programs, and so I'd like to help to improve that if I can. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Not right now. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Clinton Cleveland, and first of all, I fully support her application because she sounds wonderful. I studied environmental sciences and sustainable business management and now work as a project manager for capital projects at Urbana Gardens in San Francisco. So I'm involved in the public procurement process and getting things made, and I'm very committed to public open spaces, and I'm just excited to have the opportunity to be involved right here where I live, literally across the parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I'm going to make a comment because you opened with a compliment, and I'll pay you one as well. I wrote down two names, and yours was one of them, as people I was considering for this, so don't sell yourself short. And we should give Mr. Cleveland credit for being here for the whole meeting. Should I throw that out?
Yes.
May I ask a question, Mr. Mayor of staff? So when we, when we went over the committee, the committee review, this was one of the committees that had nine, it was like the only committee, I think, that had nine, if I remember correctly. And we had two vacancies. Did we fill both of those vacancies, and are we planning to go down to seven, and that's what happened?
Yeah, so we removed, if I'm remembering correctly, we removed two seats to bring them down to seven, one of which was the EUSD Young Person Appointment, which had never been filled, and the other resulted in the removal of a resident position because it was going from nine to seven. So you're remembering that right.
Okay, and do we have anyone who's on the committee currently who has expressed to staff that they do not intend to reapply on June 30th?
Nobody has expressed that outright, although a lot of incumbents have not filed their applications yet. So I don't know if that's, we're trying really hard to get the word out, and we're constantly reminding them, you have to do this, but not everybody has yet. So it's kind of unknowable at this point.
Mr. City Attorney, are we only allowed to make appointments for currently open and available slots, or can we make an appointment, and can we make an appointment in wait? Like, can we pre-appoint someone for July 1 if we wanted to? I want both people, in other words. It's very hard to get people who have this level of qualification onto city committees, and both of these people deserve to be on this committee.
The two names we wrote down both showed up.
Yes.
It's very unusual.
Yes. These are the two people I had picked. I don't know everyone else, so I'm kind of at a loss because I generally pick the person who shows up, but you both showed up, so it says something, so.
And/or could we increase the committee size to eight at this meeting?
Not at this meeting.
We can't do that.
You can't do that. What you are, I'm sort of thinking this a little bit out loud as I'm thinking about, as I'm answering your question. What you have on your agenda tonight before you is to appoint one member to the committee for the rest of the current term. So what you do not have in front of you is a resolution pre-appointing somebody.
Right.
So therefore, I will say that the only action that you can take right now is to appoint somebody to the current vacant seat.
With the understanding that whichever one didn't get appointed tonight would very well and could possibly be appointed on June 20th.
Okay, do we have a nomination for a person?
I'll bite the bullet. I'll nominate Zoe Chaff, and apologies to Clinton, you seem fantastic.
Please keep your application in the pool.
Yeah, we would like you to just go over there and say, I'm in for the June 20th one, where we do all the reappointments, if you would.
We'd very much like that.
I'll second the motion for Zoe Chaff.
Moved by Councilmember Medina to nominate Zoe Chaff, seconded by Vice Mayor Bowders. Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowders?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And it's a good committee. You'll enjoy it.
It makes me happy to see that we have really awesome people applying for this committee. We need it.
Oh, and I was going to invite her to the Community Services Committee meetings. We don't have enough people attend, so if you really want to know what's going on in Community Services?
Yes.
Please come to our, it's an open public meeting.
And it's definitely come to our attention that we could improve some of that marketing and outreach on the website.
Okay, the Public Art Committee. There are two applicants. Is anyone here for this? Yes.
Good evening. I'm Wendy Arbite, and I'm very excited to apply for the short-term position on the Public Art Committee. I've lived in Emeryville for about six and a half years, and I actually moved here to attend Design School in Berkeley, the California School for Professional Fabric Design. Since then, I've opened my own small business in Emeryville, which is me, doing textile design. My goal has been to submit art for the Emeryville Public Art. I've participated in the Emeryville Art Show, but I'd like to get more involved with the larger-scale sculptures and with the Wareham Development, that kind of thing. So this is a great opportunity for me to join the committee for a short term, kind of get a good taste of what's involved, give my feedback as an artist, and hopefully take it from there, maybe be considered for the two-year appointment also. But art's very close to my heart, and I would love to give back in a way that impacts all of Emeryville. Thank you. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
If you are on the committee, you would have a conflict of interest if a project came up in Emeryville.
Well, I did talk to Amber about that, and that's why, another reason why the short-term position is very appealing to me, because I would learn about the process and I could give back, but it wouldn't preclude me from future opportunities.
Is there public comment on this appointment? Do I have a nomination?
Moved to nominate Wendy Arbite.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Medina to nominate Wendy Arbite, seconded by Councilmember Martinez. Councilmember Martinez?
Aye. Congratulations.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowders?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
We have twelve-point-two. Resolution of the City Council, the City of Emery, approving the scope of work for and authorizing the city. of work for and authorizing the city engineer to advertise for public bids in the construction of the annual street rehabilitation and pavement preservation project.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Public Works Department is wrapping up plans and specifications for the next street rehab project to be hopefully under construction September-ish this year. The original scope of work for our street rehab project was about half the size that we were proposing to do, half the size in our CIP. It turns out, as we were going through all our fund balances, we found that we had some additional funds that we could use on street paving. In particular, when Shellmount Street was built, it was built with an assessment district and there were some funds available that we could spend this year on maintaining Shellmount Street. And also on Christie Avenue and the intersection at Powell Street, there was an assessment district that went in place called the West Emeryville Assessment District where those bonds have been paid off, but there's some funds available that we could use for maintenance and we're going to spend down those funds as well. As well as some additional Measure B monies that are, should be spent quicker than we were able to do it in the last few fiscal years. So with that, we have a much larger project, about twice as big as what we had contemplated. And we're going to be doing work on Shellmount Street where we have bikeways, as well as on 65th at the Greenway crossings. And what we'd like to do is present to you some changes we're proposing to the bikeways in there for safety. And I'm going to have our engineer, new engineering staff here, Ryan O'Connell, explain this. And I'd like to introduce to you, Ryan, because I haven't done that yet. He started working for the city back in January. He comes to us with five years of experience working for the city of Riverside and he has a degree from Cal Poly Pomona specializing in traffic. So he really knows traffic systems, signals and specialty in designing bikeways and roadways. So with that, I'd like to introduce Ryan and he'll go through some of these changes. The other thing I'd like to say is some of the work's going to be done on Powell Street, which we have to do at night and we're asking for your permission to put it in the bid documents that, in the specs, that the contractor has to work on those. We say night or weekends, what did we ask for on that? Both night and weekend. So we need that permission from City Council so that we can put that in the bid documents and we get our bids appropriately, so.
Thank you, Maurice. Our Mr. Mayor, Council? Yeah, I'd just like to go through this project and just highlight some cool things that we're doing with it. So speaking of which, so most of this project is slurry seal on most of the city streets. A few areas where we're actually going to be doing a grind and pave will be along Shellmount Street from Forty Street Bridge all the way to Temescal Creek. We'll also be paving the Powell-Christie intersection and this little branch going to Shellmount Way. So if you in the area, look at it, you can see why we're paving it, it's going to look pretty good after this project's complete. So one of the best things about doing a paving project, you have a blank canvas, so you get to just, you know, you have fresh paint that you can throw down and really change the dynamics of that roadway for bicycle users, pedestrian users, all vehicle users, everyone, you know, can benefit from a new paint job on the streets. So I'd like to highlight just a few of our improvements that we're doing, starting with Shellmount Street. Right here is just a before picture of what we're, what we have on Shellmount Street. You can see that we have, sorry if it's a little faded, maybe you can see it on your screen, it's a little bit better. But we have like a lot of kind of sensory overload with some of the arrows here, a lot of arrows coming in and out of the intersections, you can see. We're trying to improve the bikeway through here. The Bay Bike Trail is part of this trail right here and it's right currently a single stripe going all the way through Shellmount, all the way through to IKEA where it meets the Bay Bike Trail entry point going across the Bay Bridge. So this is just a before picture, just here's the entry point going on the Bay Bridge and here's the after, what we're trying to plan for this section. So I'm going to zoom in on here real quick. So what we're going to be doing is trying to improve this movement from the, from the bike trail going to this dedicated left turn that was installed a few years back. Right now, it's a kind of dangerous movement for bikes to get across two lanes, to get into this lane. So we're going to improve that by putting in some greenback sharrows and allowing bikes to kind of get over here a little bit easier, alerting the vehicles that there's bikes that may be headed over here to the left lane. That might be the move for a more experienced bicycle user or more brave user. So for other users, they can still use the bike lane all the way to the right side and actually use this movement. We're going to add a bike box coming out of Bay Street coming right here and they can do a movement just like so of going into the bike box, waiting for the green signal and then crossing safely across right there. So just a little improvement, but we feel it's going to make it a lot safer. We're also going to be installing two-foot buffers where we can, where it can fit within the limited cross-section that we have. So if you can follow it, we're just going to follow it all the way down. We're doing two-foot buffers all the way down as far as we could to the Bay Bike Trail entry point over there. So we've dashed it at entry and driveways and alleyway driveways and parking garage driveways. So you can see here, we've added conflict stripes right here for right turn movements for, as cars encroach into the bike lane. And we continue that two-foot buffer all the way to here. We do have medians in the way here, so we did have to drop the two-foot buffer here just as a limited cross-section right here, we couldn't fit the buffer, but it will still be a lot safer than what it was out there previously. Yes.
I have a quick question. On Shellmount, the southbound bike lane that goes towards the Bay Trail under the bridges there, the, the black asphalt pavement slopes and ends and then there's like the concrete for the curb. And I'm just curious, when we do the paving here, are we actually going to be leveling that? And I can't level it because of water movement, but are we going to be doing anything to mitigate the transition on those because people have a narrow space to work with and they have to kind of choose to be right up against the curb or be on the slope of the asphalt? I'm just wondering how that's going to work out.
They are going to have more room now with that two-foot buffer, but also in the areas where we're paving, we're going to fix that cross slope there, which it might be like a little bit steep or there might be like a gap between the gutter pan and where the asphalt is, where it's a couple inches. That'll be leveled out and should be a lot closer to, to that gutter pan elevation.
Okay.
So, yeah. But areas where we are slurring, that's something we can't fix with that. We have to actually grind it out to be able to fix that out. So the areas from the Forty Street Bridge to Temescal Creek Bridge, which is, here's the Temescal Creek Bridge right here. Here to the south will be get paved, here to the north is going to get slurried. Actually, sorry about that. We actually extended it a little bit into this intersection, so it'll be paved to this intersection. Okay, so.
I have a question about coming off, coming on the Forty Street Bridge where it wraps around in front of IKEA. I assume that the bike lane also would be ground out because it's got compression riffles that are a little bit dangerous for cyclists coming down that hill. Is that?
So coming down right here, you're saying?
Yes, you're coming down.
You came down Forty and you're coming down right here?
Yes.
Yeah, this is going to be grounded, grounded down and repaved and a lot of those bot dots are going to get removed and it'll be a striping configuration all the way to the concrete on the bridge deck. So it'll be a lot easier to ride, I feel. You're not going to get bumped on those little bot dot items right there. So yeah, so this is just the home run into here. So the other thing that I should point out is we've, we're trying to have less sensory overload for the vehicular users, the bicycle users and all that. Prior, we had, you know, coming in and out of every intersection, this might not be the best example, but let me go back up here. We had coming in, into an intersection, out of intersection, we had, you know, arrows everywhere, you know? It's kind of too much, you know, there's something in the traffic engineering world, simple, simple is better, you know? So we're trying to minimize, minimize that and so less maintenance that we have to do later down the road too of refreshing those stripes. Okay, so the next street that I'd like to point out is Adeline Street where we did a very good road diet a few years back. A lot of good feedback from that. So here's the existing configuration and here is what we're going to be adding. We are going to be adding a bike box on Adeline at Forty Street, so on both sides of Adeline Street. So we're going to be restricting the right turn movement at the intersection right here. So right turns will no longer be allowed on red and this will give bicycle users a head start in making this left and getting a head start through this intersection. Also, they'll be able to do the same thing from the southbound direction and we're going to have some conflict stripes here for the right turn movement. The other thing I should point out is these crossings right here are kind of unsafe right now. You know, we've been getting a lot of public feedback from these. We're going to improve the conditions right here by putting some yield to ped paddleboards right here leading into this. So you can see these on Hollis Street is an example, right up at the 61st Street is an example where we have this already in place. We're going to have these placed on each side of this, of these crossings and this fourth crossing is over here. The other thing that we'll be installing is speed feedback signs on this street of Adeline, so that's something we'll be adding with this project.
Can I ask a question? I'm not an engineer on these things, but this is, as a regular pedestrian user, I'm always kind of confused about the placement of these pedestrian, the little baubles that you put in the street, that they're always like right at the crosswalk and I feel like people don't see them until they arrive at them. And I just wonder why we don't move them farther away from the crosswalk so that people see them closer to the approach? Is there a reason why we put them right at the crosswalks?
We put them down per what the MTCD calls for and they've, you know, done studies of how they should be placed and they're usually placed only on low-speed streets to where you may not need the full, you know, advance warning there. So these ones, I could definitely look at it and I could see these ones actually benefiting by placing them back maybe five, 10 feet or so.
Because the place that's always got the problem is Powell and Doyle. Like they're there and I literally have watched women with children on bicycles like almost get killed trying to cross there because there's no advance warning and people fly down the bridge through that intersection and I mean, we're putting a traffic signal there, so that's mitigated differently in the future. But it's these types of crossings, mid-block and crossings on streets like Adeline that just make me concerned that it's too, it's too fast for somebody to see it that late and I just don't know.
Yeah, these paddles are more effective on the lower speed streets like Adeline, maybe not Powell. So Powell would, and we are putting in a signal there, wouldn't be the best method for that right there.
To clarify, I believe on the Greenway Crossing on 65th, 64th, we are moving back those paddles.
Yeah, that was a request when we designed that, that I know I sat with staff and we're going to put the cue, what do you call them? Cue pieces? What are they called? They have a name.
Paddles?
What did you call them?
Yield paddles.
Yeah, but the little, the little just white things that hang by, or the ones that are by themselves sticking out before.
Or the bollards.
The bollards, yeah, thank you. Yeah, so we're going to do that, the Greenway crossings.
Yeah, so actually that's part of this presentation, so we'll discuss those crossings in a little bit. So that's about it for Adeline. Yeah.
Are we getting a no right turn on red? Did you say that?
Yes, yes.
And so is that, where's that sign placement going to be? Sorry.
It's going to be on the, it's going to be prior to the intersection and on the mast arm of the, one of those trap signal poles there.
Just a flat, no light, no flashing light next to it?
No, no flashing lights, yeah, just be no turn on red sign, yeah. So this right here is, sorry, it's hard to, you know, get your bearings on this. This is the City of Oakland and City of Emeryville border. This is Peralta Street and this is the community garden, the little triangle piece. MacArthur Street is right here and the MacArthur Street Bridge is right here. This is a project being done by City of Oakland. They are going to be doing a road diet and re-striping their roadway like this with 10-foot parking lanes, bike lane on the outside of the parking lane and the 11-foot travel lanes coming to our border. But now we have a gap because right here on this side in Emeryville, we do not have bike lanes. So what we're going to be doing is, let me get to the next page, sorry about that. So this is a before for that same intersection, Peralta Street, Watts, MacArthur. You can see it's kind of skewed, a little funky. If you go out there right now, a lot of the striping is faded, it's even for cars, they don't even know which lane they're supposed to be in. So we're going to be re-striping this or slurring it, paving this intersection and re-striping it. And we're going to be copying Oakland's idea of having the parking lanes out here and the bike lane on this side. We're going to be providing a safe passage for the bikes through here with two options of using a shero in this lane so they can provide, go through there, or a sheltered bike lane through there. Coming southbound, they can stay all the way to the right and then slope over to, over here and do that. This shero is actually, have a green background too, the exhibit didn't get updated, but that's one thing that we'll be doing. Oh yeah, if you want to.
Yeah, do we not have the paving responsibility for that West MacArthur Boulevard piece between Harlan and Peralta or Watts and Peralta?
Maurice, you might.
Is that Caltrans? The block of West MacArthur between Peralta and Watts, the back end of Big Daddy's?
No, that's definitely Caltrans.
Okay.
That's kind of, and they don't do anything with it either, so.
It's terrible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the next thing is, and this was actually on our bike and ped plan from 2012 to install this, but this is San Pablo Avenue and this is the Joseph Emery Skate Park right here, this IHOP right here to kind of get your bearings. Right now, this, we have a bike lane on Emery Street that comes up here or bike, sharos at least, right through here to get out to park. And really, we want to have a safe passage all the way to 45th Street to the north of here, which is our bike boulevard. So what we've done is we're going to be putting in this little bike left turn to get on, go through the skate park, parkway through here. And we'll be installing a shero right here as well, which is an added to this exhibit. So bikes can go from Emery Street, go right here, come up here through the skate park and go to 45th Street, our bike boulevard. Next up is our Greenway Crossings and let me just zoom out on this one.
On the skate park, how much room is there for bikes to go through?
It's pretty wide if you walk through there. I don't know the exact dimensions.
The path is 10 feet wide, so it's shared for everyone, but it's, the path is generally 10 feet wide.
It's my daily commute and I find that in the morning, there's not too many skaters in my way. I go a different way on the way home.
Yeah.
Because the skaters are in there using the speed.
And also it's less convenient going the other direction for me.
Yeah, we go to lunch right there at that shopping center all the time and walk right through with the skaters. Skaters will go around you, there's room for both of you to use them, so, yeah. All the features are kind of off to the side, they're not right there in the center, so you can walk right through at the same time. So it's a little faded right here on the screen, I'm not sure it looks on your screen. But right now, this is the Greenway right here, if you follow my mouse, and these are all the crossings at 64, 65th and 66th, or maybe 65th, 66th and 67th, sorry. Right now, let me zoom in on this one. So the crossing at 66, when it had its continental crosswalk installed, it was installed incorrectly. This should actually be parallel with the vehicular traffic like this. So that's one thing that we'll be fixing, but we'll also be extending the double yellow stripes out and moving the yield signs, or the yield sign and the yield markings back a little bit further, trying to get cars to stop a little bit sooner, be aware of the peds a little bit sooner. We're also going to be putting channelizers all the way down, about five foot spacing all the way to the crossing. So it's going to provide a safer crossing for the peds going through there.
Sorry, what's a channelizer?
It's just like a little plastic bollard, like you see them on like highways sometimes for the toll lanes or something like that, so.
This is the thing I didn't know the name for earlier, like the little white sticks, but it has the effect of slowing people, it narrows them and so, these are raised crossings too now, right?
My understanding is that we're. They're not, they're not raised right now, but they will be with a future project.
Okay, so we'll just paint them for now, but we are going to, we are going to raise them.
This is a temporary move.
Yeah, this is an interim change. Since we're doing the paving out there, we have an opportunity to change it right now.
Okay.
But we're going to do some more later.
The next street to highlight is 65th Street at Overland, one of our bike boulevards. There's bike lanes all along 65th Street. We're going to provide a bike box at 65th Street going on to Overland to provide a safer passage for bikes getting onto this. Also, we're going to install a shero right here to kind of highlight with a green background that's not on this exhibit, but bikes will be able to pop out here, come right here and get safely onto our bike boulevard. Yes?
Is there a reason why we just didn't go across the freeway and paint the crossings the same way on the, on Shellbound at 65th, on right on the other side of the railroad crossing?
Over here.
Yeah, why we didn't do that one?
Which crossing are you talking about?
None of those crosswalks have like the same crosswalk design.
Yeah, there is a railroad right here where there's advanced preemption timing from the railroads where the gates need to come down in a certain manner. All the crossings are timed in a certain, like for, for the slowest vehicle to get across this track safely. So us putting this green bike box is actually hindering this vehicle getting across, but this is actually one of the closest ones here. If we put that anywhere. If we put that anywhere else.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misspeaking. It's not the green bike box, it's the thatched pedestrian crossings that are more visible because people, there's a building right at that corner on the southwest or southeast corner of, of that, that space and so many people don't stop and make the right turn from Shellmount to 65th because that's a crossroad. So I'm just curious why we didn't.
It's one of our new policies when we're repaving a crosswalk that we're going to put back a Continental Crosswalk now, right, right now. And actually, right here, we're not paving on this side. So yeah, we could do it, but it's going to kind of look like a ladder. It'll probably look better and be better when we come in there and pave.
Okay.
Yeah. So the last one is, this was privately approved at a city council meeting, is 61st Street will be turning into a two-way street officially with this project. So we're going to be re-striping it and just putting in some double yellows leading into and out of the intersections. We're going to put in some advanced signs on Hollis Street and probably out here at the entrance on 61st Street, trying to alert the neighborhood and drivers that, hey, this is now a two-way traffic. So it's just going to take a little bit of, people getting used to it, so we'd like to make that as safe as possible. And that's about it as far as these, do you guys have any questions?
Have you already done notification to the folks who live on 61st that this is coming?
You know, it was before my time, before I got here.
We did actually, I mean, this was approved by the transportation, recommended by the Transportation Committee and by the city council a number of months ago and we thought since we had to do all the striping work, it would be best to do it with this job.
Yeah, I was just wondering if folks already know about it and if you've received any positive or negative feedback.
Only positive feedback. I've only got complaints about people driving down the wrong direction. Gail Donaldson was the one that really pushed this forward for me, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
I think there's a public comment. Public comment?
Two really quick questions. One is, on this one, there'll be stop signs both directions, is that correct? Okay, awesome, at the intersection of Doyle.
Yeah.
Awesome. And then on the other, on the very first image you showed us, on, so what was that?
Do you just speak to the mic because every time you turn, I can't hear you.
Sure. On Shellmount and Christie, is there any way to put sort of, I've heard that something as simple as just like putting a red, like, you know, something red that's this tall, that's say four to six inches tall, really prevents drivers from going into the lane? Is there a possibility of doing something like that to protect bicyclists more?
You're talking for the protected bike lane going left?
For the two, sorry, for the two-foot barriers that he was talking about? Does that make sense?
Oh, you're talking about between the lanes at the right end of the.
It's not inside of the buffer zone.
Right, I got you.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, okay.
Can you pull that up?
Yeah. It's going to take a little while. It's a funky mouse at this podium.
In the future, you'll be taking us through in 3D.
All right, so you're talking about this, the buffer, putting in like a vertical obstruction for the vehicles to keep it separate and the lanes are pretty narrow through here. It's a 10-foot lane, it's actually borderline that we were able to fit them. Adding a vertical obstruction there is another feature that it's just going to get knocked off. You can see some traffic engineers like to use like bot dots, the little pucks that are along there and you look at them, you know, a year later, half of them are knocked off, you know? So we put it out there, but it's going to get hit and hit constantly and yeah, so, and it'll be a future claim for the city really, popping tires possibly, so yeah.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve it.
Second, and this is the third time I've seen Ryan do this presentation, it keeps getting better.
That was a very good presentation, thank you guys.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Expect no less from Bronco.
Moved by Vice Mayor Bowers, seconded by Councilmember Medina.
The Broncos.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bowers.
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue.
Aye. Okay. 12.3.
Oh, time's up.
Feeding over.
Resolution of the City Council, the City of Emeryville approving a facade improvement grant program and appropriating $200,000 from the Economic Development Fund.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Donahue, members of council. Let me switch slideshows here and I promise to be brief or as brief as possible. Staff is pleased to bring forward the facade grant program proposal and especially after today's, today's well-attended small business joint study session. By way of background, back in January of 2016, this past year, City Council set priorities and goals and strategies for fiscal years 2016 and 18 to include support for worker-owned businesses and small businesses. And then in November, study session, council directed staff to develop business license, fire inspection fee rebate program, which you approved recently and we are working on implementing that. And then also to revive the facade grant program. And then in January through March, the Economic Development Advisory Committee developed a set of guidelines to recommend to council. I like to point out in these photos, they show a successful example of the facade grant program. The first photo is taken in 2003, this is right near us at 1375 Park Avenue. Now, the photo depicts, depicts full vacancy of the building, meaning that they had no tenants and that it could be presumed, given that 2003 was prior to the downturn, that this was as a result of the condition of the building and not larger economic factors. The second photo depicts the building as recently, in its recent condition, in full And just to provide context for the current suggested program guidelines, the history of the program started in 1997. The city established a facade improvement grant program to provide financial grants to businesses for upgrading the exteriors to the buildings located on San Pablo Avenue and Park Avenue. And this was then expanded in 2002 to include portions of 65th Street, Adeline, Powell and Hollis. Over the next 15 years, the facade improvement grant program provided assistance to numerous small businesses with nearly a million dollars in grants approved during that time. However, in 2012, as you know, the state of California dissolved all redevelopment agencies statewide and this effectively ended the program. With regard to current funding status, 5% of surplus tax increments received, i.e. boomerang funds, are dedicated to the Economic Development Fund and the current balance is approximately 1.1 million. Staff has received several requests from facade grant program or for facade grant programs, including requests for help with improvements such as new awnings, signs and outdoor cafe space. In addition to helping current businesses with their development on their street, which encourage further occupancy of buildings, it would also help us in our efforts to bring businesses into town. In brief, the key updates suggested for the current program and some of the modifications suggested would be to expand the definition of eligible improvements to include, from exterior improvements to include high visibility interior improvements, a split match arrangement removed in favor of maximum award, a 75% of total cost regardless of contractor use, and first come first serve process eliminated in favor of an application window. Staff is currently suggesting, our initial thoughts anyway, that the first round would happen August 1st through October 1st. We may need to amend those date suggestions. And that the expenditure of funds be higher for the first year would be anticipated up to 200,000. And then a consulting architect would be used, and we've done this before with the previous program. It helps provide some guideline for the applicants and also ensures quality design. We already have an architect on retainer. And then if eligible requests exceeded available funding, there's a suggested criteria program. For example, determining applicant's awards by length of lease term, longer is favored in the current suggested guidelines, length of time, the property has been vacant, and then greatest building improvement. And then finally, and again, please note that these photos depict another example of a successful result from the former grant program. In the first photo, the top photo you see before, this is Pasani Properties, they're over on San Pablo Avenue. Again, this is in 2003, prior to the downturn, where they had significant vacancy in the building. And then the second photo, the after photo, which was after the facade grant work, shows full occupancy in 2017. At this time, staff is recommending adoption of a resolution approving the facade grant program and appropriating 200,000 from the Economic Development Fund for this program. Alternately, if council could choose to recommend modifications to the guideline, and staff would recommend respectfully that council consider referencing, you have in your packet materials, the guidelines, and that if you are going to suggest making modifications to the guidelines, that you might help staff out by pointing out maybe a page or a section where you're suggesting modification. And that concludes staff's report at this time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Do you feel that it would be hard to judge who to award monies to? Is it the, I know the suggestion of the properties that seem to need it the most and the longer leases would get some priority, but do you feel that these are difficult judgments for the staff to make on how to award?
Part of the program, and Manager Smalling could speak to it further too, I think that part of this decision-making process is to bring it before the Economic Development Committee or at least for some advice and, and the recommendations, and that would help us determine those, so it's not as subjective, as it were.
Any other questions? Not right now.
Mr. Mayor, city councilors, I'll be very brief. In my service on the Budget Advisory Committee, I'm reluctant to spend money on almost anything, but from my service on the Economic Development Advisory Committee, this is money well-spent and I urge you to accept it.
Love your balance.
I've got some, a comment first.
Yes.
I plan on supporting this. I would ask that staff start tracking as much as possible some outcomes from our investment in this program. Looking at sales receipts increases, walk-ins, anything that we can really try to track some hard data so we know where we can get the most bang for our limited bucks.
That's a great idea. I have a couple items, Mr. Mayor. I would like to propose a few adjustments to the program. Thanks, staff, for this proposal. I just had a few items. We're looking at $200,000 total being made available and right now on page five, the facade grant maximum amount is seven, listed as $75,000, which reflects 75% of the total costs. I would like to propose that it be $50,000 and that it could, $50,000 to be approved by the scoring committee and that if there's an application that goes above $50,000, that additional authority beyond the $50,000 could be approved by the city council. The reason being is that there, there is, seems to be an appetite for this and I just am worried that $75,000 would only give us potentially a couple applicants that could be approved and I don't know if others feel that, that that's enough or if staff disagrees and thinks facade improvements couldn't be made for less, less than $50,000, maybe Chad can help me out.
It's, it's hard to tell at this point what kind of demand is out there and for what grant size, but I did want to point out that any grant above $45,000 was going to come before the city council for award of the contract in any case. So I don't know if you might, might consider.
My point is moot, that, that point's moot, never mind. My other couple points were that on the selection process, so I guess the next page, applications will be scored by a panel of city staff members. I would like to propose that it include at least one member of the Economic Development Advisory Committee. If my colleagues are supportive of that, I don't have anything against staff participating in this process, obviously. I just think that the committee's desire to be more involved and having a voice on that committee is an important thing and so I think someone, EDAC can nominate themselves if we think that that's fine, or we can nominate someone from EDAC to do it, but I would like them to have a say in that process. In terms of buildings that are eligible, we have these zones. I don't know if people feel that significant structures that have a lasting presence in our city should be, if they're not in one of these zones, should be also considered. We have some really old and architecturally significant buildings in the city that don't fall inside the neatly carved out spaces from the redevelopment time for the facade program. I just wondered if others have opinions about allowing significant structures to be included and if Mr. Bryant might have an opinion.
Well, I'm, just a point of clarification, by that I assume you mean the significant structures that are formally designated in the planning regulations.
I'm referring to the designated ones in the planning rigs, yeah. There's a list of like 50 of them.
I think it's like 85.
Oh, maybe I'm wrong on that. So I had that as a suggestion and my suggestions come from having one-on-ones with members of the Economic Development Committee about some of these items. And then just lastly, the only other item I had was I was a little confused about the lease term component of the scoring. So we give more points to an owner occupied building with many years remaining on their lease and to me, that's the business that has perhaps more risk involved. So like you just move in and you have more risk and maybe you don't have a good, successful business model and we take $50,000 and we improve the building, whereas somebody who may have been in the city for five years and is successful, but maybe only has five years left on their lease gets less points, but they have a more successful business model and this is a way of helping boost revenue and make them a more permanent fixture in the city. And I totally understand what the mentality was with the requirement or the idea with 10 points for the brand-new ones because you wanted to show that they had a long-term commitment, but even you can break leases or abandon leases and I was just concerned about expending this limited resource on structures that, with businesses that don't have a proven model yet and I just wanted to see or if staff had a thought on that.
My recollection is that that particular term of the guidelines was added by the subcommittee and came from, I believe, the City of San Francisco's or another city's facade grant program. And the thought was, as you correctly stated, the thought was, well, if someone has a lot of years left on their lease, they're going to be there, they've shown a commitment and the improvements that the city is helping purchase, then, you know, will be there. But your point is well-taken, that that does mean that there could be increased risk. There was, in the ultimate category in terms of lease term was if you owned your building, right, those, those folks were at the top of the pile and, and that was just one of many scoring factors, three or so scoring factors, but your, yeah, your points are valid. And I think some modification could be made to this to reflect your, your.
So I've said a lot, those are my comments, I just wondered if others had thoughts on those items.
I have some thoughts about the, the program. I mean, I am concerned that we have all this un.
I mean, I am concerned that we have all this undeveloped new rental space that tend to be mid-block retail spaces that have no parking. And a facade grant could, in effect, create some more visual presence for this kind of location. So maybe this kind of investment by the city, even if that business model failed, if the improvements could be somewhat universal for the next tenant to utilize, you know, something about the design being applicable to more than one business use of the site would seem to be something desirable. And then also, you know, the, on the flip side of that, are we making better architecture because of failed architectural design from developments of the past? Or, you know, there's that aspect of this. Are we just fueling developers in the future to spend $0 on these retail spaces going forward, assuming the city will catch up and add some architecture, making them usable? So there's a balancing act here.
We could, that's a great point. We could say that it's only applicable to buildings that are of a certain age, so that nobody comes in and does shoddy work expecting their tenant to do, have the city pay for it. You could put a minimum age on the building, say the building has to be 25 years old.
Well, except I hate to do that to some of our 10-year-old projects that are just sitting there empty that need some help.
They need other remedies, not facade remedies.
I would note that new buildings do require design review approval from the Planning Commission, and they're pretty stringent about it.
Okay, I'm pleased to hear that comment.
Are we proposing any changes, or no?
I'll move support.
Well, I just wanted, I don't know if anyone else has feedback or comments.
What about the $50,000? You get four, four applications versus two. You know, this maybe is a good suggestion?
I don't know. Krishna or Diane, have thoughts?
No, I thought that there weren't, I thought things would have to come to council if they were over 45, 50,000.
Oh, yeah, that wasn't, I was, I'm speaking to the, adding an EDAC member to the committee, whether we want to add significant structures to eligible structures, and whether we want to review the point system for lease terms. Those were the three items I had.
I'm fine with those changes.
Okay.
By reviewing the lease term criterion, I guess, can I clarify? So would the motion be for us to bring the program back as revised with these comments? Or are you making, and what I've heard thus far is add an EDAC member to the scoring panel, add significant structures to the eligible map, areas map. I heard a suggestion about universal improvements that can be used by multiple tenants. I don't know if you want to go there, but we could, we could operationalize that by clarifying that projects that, because virtually everything that's been funded under this program is usable by future tenants, even if the business leaves. The only exception to that would be signs. Signage is something that if you fund it, it's pretty much only good for that business. One simple way of operationalizing that desire would be to say, we're going to favor projects that are not signs, basically. That is one way of getting to that. Then with regard to lease term criterion, I'm not quite clear on whether you want to eliminate it as a consideration or reverse it.
I actually really understand the point of having it be for longer-term tenants.
Yeah, I do, too. I just wanted to evaluate, I mean, I'm okay with being a wash. I just, when I met with EDAC members, some of them had that point, and some of them were like, well, you know, I mean, if you think of like micro, Commonwealth Micro Pub, I mean, they were there for, what, nine months, right? And they had a longer lease, but there was a whole sign and a facade and everything, and the person who came after that had to spend a lot of money to change that. And so if we were putting up the money, we're potentially putting $50,000 on a business that might not make it, just because they have a long lease and they haven't, they haven't been there, though. So it's, I'm fine leaving it, and we could just trial-run it for a year and see who comes in. But I just wanted to make sure we examined that, because I don't want, the product of this is really important for the business community. I don't want people to feel like we had a failed program because we spent the money on something that didn't work.
Yeah, I'm fine with removing it, not reversing it, but maybe taking that consideration out of the point system.
Or maybe we could just reduce the points, so it's not as much of an influence.
We could make it less of a weight.
We could just leave it the way it is, but maybe cut all the points in half from what they are, so it's not having the overarching weight on the process.
That makes sense.
That's great.
Sure. That seems good.
Okay. Because there's a lot of points in that category, so.
Okay. And did we conclude on favoring projects that were not signs?
Yes, I think we need that.
I think that's where.
Projects that are not signs?
Not signs.
Just favoring, not saying you won't fund a sign, but saying that if you have two projects and they're in other, in otherwise equal, and you don't have enough money to fund all the projects that applied, that the one that, you know, if one of them's a sign, the one that's not a sign is the one that's going to be funded, because that's an improvement that's going to last.
Or includes signage. And if you look at the example that's on the screen right now, I've been around long enough that I remember when these came through. And the awnings, as you can see, have signage on them. So the awnings were included signs. But the facade improvements that were funded under these grants included more than the awnings. There were a lot of other elements of the facade, but there was, signage was included.
So are you proposing like bonus points if you don't have a sign? Or are you proposing if they only score equal, that then the one that doesn't have a sign gets scored ahead? I mean, so if a proposal with a sign gets 12 points, and a proposal without a sign gets 11 points, we still fund the sign?
Depending on what they're using the money for. Yeah, exactly.
Question, has every single facade improvement request had a sign on it?
I.
Most of them do.
Not positive that that is the case, but certainly most of them have.
As I said, though, they include a lot more than just the signage, so that it would be possible for a future tenant to benefit from the same facade improvements, with the exception of the signage, which they would then have to change.
Right.
My last question is just, do we have anything that prohibits a business owner from coming back to getting multiple grants within a certain window of time, so that we don't have people coming this year and saying, oh, I want painting and facades, and next year saying, oh, I want new doors and windows, and we're just slowly bankrolling somebody's, you know, refurbishment?
We do not have that provision in there, and that is a question that I put to the EDAC, as to whether or not they wanted to put a timeframe, a limit on, you know, when you can come back.
They didn't want to do it.
It was, it was sort of difficult to parse out exactly what sort of circumstance you would want to do that in. And, and so, yeah, it was left out.
I can't say for sure, but I don't think we've really had that situation occur in the past.
Charlie, we have.
We have had that problem.
We have.
Oh, we have?
We have. I've also been here long enough now to be able to remember that we have given multiple facade grants to, it was Cana Casana, the Indian restaurant up on San Pablo.
Oh.
And.
And they changed, right? Okay.
Yes, and it had changed. So I don't remember exactly the timeframe in terms of how long had passed between, between the applications, but the point is that we had provided multiple grants to the same property owner over a period of time.
So I'll propose an amendment to the program that prohibits the same applicant seeking a facade grant within seven years.
Why seven?
Seven is kind of in between, it's in the middle of the common small-business range for leases. What's that?
It's between five and 10.
Yeah, I mean, that's, most leases are five or 10 years, and so it kind of strikes the balance by, you either finish your lease, or you're about to finish your lease before you would come back. Yeah.
Fair enough.
Yeah, it seems good.
Okay, so that's my motion, that thing.
Okay. So, just to confirm, the program then would be approved with the following modifications, which staff would make. Score, the score committee would be defined to include an EDAC member. We would add significant structures to the eligible areas. We would have the amount of points that are awarded for, under the lease term criteria. We would favor non-sign projects in some fashion, we'll find a way to operationalize that. And we will prohibit the same applicant from receiving a grant if they've received one within the last seven years. Did I get everything?
That sounds like it.
That was my motion.
Move approval with all of those modifications? Oh, sorry, Diane, what's it?
No.
Okay. Move approval with all of those modifications?
Okay, I'll second that motion, then.
Moved by Councilmember Medina, seconded by Vice Mayor Bouters, to approve the resolution as amended, as eloquently stated by Mr. Smalley. Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bouters?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
Communication and reports.
Oh, it's Department, Department heads? Oh. Which one are we on?
Communication and reports.
So 13.1 now?
Now 13.1, Department heads.
None. None.
Councilmembers reporting on meetings attended.
See, that's the one you wanted. Yeah, no, I thought you were going to report out, sorry. So I made it to a Housing Committee Authority meeting, Housing Authority, never mind, Housing Authority meeting, and it was quite informative. It's, I will say it's unique, being outside of Emeryville, and dealing with government members from other cities. They don't always see things the way we do.
Yeah.
And phrase things very differently. So I thought that was kind of a nice thing. But the important takeaway, and I think this is good for us to know as we go towards affordable housing, there's no money. They're getting paid, they're expecting significantly less. I'm sure this is a shock to everyone up here, but there's just no money. And so I, we have several properties in Emeryville we'll have to keep an eye on, so. And that's the report out.
My report out is that Mayor Donahue and I attended a North County meeting on homelessness with councilmembers from Berkeley and Oakland, and Supervisor Carson and staff from the county in these cities to discuss next steps on a North County collaborative on homelessness issues.
I just wanted to mention, I said on Stop Waste, and we have expanded our T-shirt-type plastic bag ban to most stores in Alameda County, and that went into effect in May, the expansion. So if you remember, it used to be just at certain stores, and now we've expanded to more types of retail establishments. And we will be expanding further into restaurants in November. So there's a little bit of time for restaurants to use up their supply if they purchased for a whole year, but we will hopefully be seeing a lot less of those plastic bags in our, in our storm drains.
Diane, does that apply to, so like, the big places like Home Depot, are they, they're all caught in that, too, now?
Yep.
Okay, cool.
And we have moved from a more active enforcement model to a complaint-based enforcement model. So you can look, you can go to stopwaste.org to find their contact information if there's anyone that you need to report, who needs to be contacted if they're not in compliance.
So is Target gonna, do we know, like?
Target is actually using compliant bags. So there are, there are sturdier plastic bags that are, that are, under state law, deemed reusable because of how thick they are. But they're, you know, they've, they went ahead and did that ahead of the curve some time ago and moved to those bags, but I believe they do charge for them, and that's, that's part of the incentive for people not to take those bags. So I often go to Target and just walk out holding things in my arms if I forget my, my bag.
So as someone who does the same thing, you can put them back in the cart and push the cart to the vehicle or to the bicycle?
Where's the competitive spirit?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Competitive.
Okay, anyone else? All right, future agenda items requested from councilmembers.
I have one, Mr. Mayor. So at our last city schools meeting, it came up, and not for the first time, that we should perhaps talk about the mission of the city schools board, for lack of a better word. And I, I believe that is going to be on our July agenda at city schools, and I was wondering if council would consider having a pre-meeting, so that we went into that meeting with some, some clarity on our side about what we thought that, that group should discuss. So we could do that at our June 6th meeting, if staff would be amenable to that, to, and I spoke briefly with our city attorney, because I definitely wanted to make sure that we were adhering to any standards that separate school districts and municipalities.
Right. So the discussion I had with Councilmember Martinez was the role of the city schools committee, and particularly in relation to the evolving relationship of the city and the school board. This is a committee that has been around for a while, and perhaps one of the things that the council might, particularly newer members of the council might want to do, is sort of look at the role of the city schools committee and its relationship to the school board, and an understanding of, you know, perhaps in advance of the next city schools committee, what the city, as a partner in that committee, wants to bring as, you know, its, its agenda items, its asks, what its, what its thoughts are about, you know, how to, how to proceed on items that are within the city schools committee, city schools committees' purview.
Yeah, it seems like a good agenda item to me.
I really appreciate you mentioning it. I think having us on the same page is a great idea.
Great, thank you.
I have a suggestion for an item that concerns our future. We have to make certain cuts in our, potentially, some of our services to meet our new budget, but we also have to look out for our income. And I am a little mystified about one of our big income items. Almost a third of our monies are coming from the business license tax. And I would like to discuss issues for how we evaluate this kind of tax. What exactly is, for the majority of this tax, our business license tax, concerns gross receipts? The meaning of gross receipts. Do smaller affiliate wings of giant corporations, the smaller affiliate is here in Emeryville, can they effectively say they have no gross receipts in our city? Are there ways at looking at our, you know, how to understand our business license tax more clearly, so that we may, in the future, if we have to, look at this as an income source and just evaluate this for, for our city going forward? So I would like to consider ways that, to hear from our staff how they audit, and what the parameters for when they audit, you know, can they, can a business being looked at, and, and just even from the outside, and say, wow, you, your expenses look like you're exceeding what you're claiming as gross receipts? You know, what, different ways of looking at it and studying it, so that we can, can feel confident that we're actually collecting the tax from our businesses. Not that I think the average business is hiding something, but that I think that it's important for us to know about what the meaning is for the business license tax. And I think our future might be dependent upon this, given the reality of potentially a dip in our sales tax income. So I would like to have this as a kind of study session item, just so we know more about this major component of our city's income.
Do you have a timeframe in mind, Mr. Mayor?
It's not pressing immediately because the usual payments happen March 1st, so, you know, it's somewhat at the convenience of our calendar.
Thank you and I anticipate that we would want to consult with some, you know, experts in this area and there's one or two that I do have in mind, it's something that in these discussions about the budget that it certainly has come up. So with a little bit of time, you know, on our side, we'd like to, certainly we do plan on the next several meetings, kind of being dominated by our budget discussions and of course, this is an important part of it. I just think that it's going to be more of a long-term, but I would like to get some advice from somebody who maybe we could persuade to come in and talk to the city about what other cities are doing, best practice and all of that.
I'm supportive, Mr. Mayor, if that's what you'd like to do, I think that's fine.
I'm supportive as well, I'm curious if you might ask for even more in terms of, you know, if we did have a consultant, say, come in and talk about best practices, not just for business license tax, but kind of give an overall review of what other cities are doing and with their revenue.
That probably is a great idea because it's all part of the broader strategy.
I just had one question, it doesn't need to be agended if the city attorney could speak to it real briefly, update on the noise ordinance and the timeline for that.
Sure, the noise ordinance, we're hoping to get a consultant under contract in the summer to be able to start the, kind of the baseline study that we had outlined in terms of what was necessary.
It's a good time to do it.
So, that's the goal.
Okay.
One smaller item I'd be interested in bringing up is, I died at the statewide level recently, but I think we might have room to be more innovative here in Emeryville, looking at an Idaho stop ordinance.
Can we preempt state law on that?
Stop ordinance.
No?
San Francisco tried, it wasn't because of legal reasons that it failed, but we can have a non, yeah, we can have like a non-enforcement sort of policy of people rolling through stop signs, hey chief?
We're talking about bicyclists.
We're talking about bike safety.
Not automobiles rolling through.
It would be like a sanctuary city for cyclists.
Ding ding ding. I think we should look at ways where we can have really common sense sort of traffic enforcement for bicyclists as well.
Well, I would like to study that issue. I've been noted to roll through a few stop signs.
As your brother would say, click click.
I will never admit to rolling through a stop sign, but I think it's something that has crossed my mind and there's been some recent studies from Berkeley that show that actually improves the safety of cyclists, so it's something if you guys are willing, I'd like to look at, does not to be of the highest importance, but something we could put on a later agenda.
I'm willing to explore that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, looks like with that, we're adjourned.